Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September 4th, 2024 meeting of the Gaithersburg Planning Commission. We have a little bit of a backlog tonight of minutes. So, reading through the minutes, do anybody have any concerns with them?
None of the four.
Any changes, anything? Okay, of the four. So what I'll ask for is a motion just to approve all four, and if whoever makes the motion just reads the dates for all four, that would be great.
Mr. Chairman, I approve that we approve the minutes of June 20th, 2024, July 3rd, 2024, July 17th, 2024, and August 7th, 2024.
Second? Let's move to the second. If all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That passes unanimously. Did I hear from you, Carolyn?
I can't vote. There's five here.
I should have mentioned that. My apologies. Okay. Yeah, and so for the record, just to clarify, all five regular commissioners here, so Commissioner or alternate Commissioner Reg will be observing and not participating in regulatory matters, but can participate in discussions that are non-regulatory in nature. Okay, thanks very much. Next up is a record pilot agenda. We have one tonight.
So, that item, actually, we have to remove and then push it to the next meeting. The plat was not ready for tonight's meeting, so we'll just defer that.
So we'll defer that. That takes us to our consent agenda, and there's one item on the consent agenda tonight for AFP 9346-2022, extension of amendment to final site plan approval for 9713 Washingtonian Boulevard in the MXD Mixed Use Development Zone. This was an amendment to final plan approval. Are there any concerns with the consent agenda tonight?
No.
All right, straightforward. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
To move to the second, if all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That passes unanimously. All right, as Greg moves to the main desk, let me announce that we are now going to go to recommendations to Mayor and City Council. First up is SDP-9736-2024, request for a multi-stage mixed-use redevelopment of 1,600 dwelling units, 750,000 square feet of employment uses, 250,000 square feet of large-format retail, and 220,000 square feet of neighborhood-scaled commercial and entertainment/amusement uses. This is a recommendation to the Mayor and City Council. I will remind the audience that the Planning Commission's record is closed on this, so we'll only be discussing our recommendation and presenting from staff is Greg. All my insults out there.
Good evening. This is a recommendation to the Mayor and City Council for schematic development plan application SDP-9736-2024. The subject property shown on the monitor is known as Lake Forest Mall and its address at 701 Russell Avenue. The subject's site comprises of 102-acre site currently improved for the Lake Forest Mall, surface parking spaces, and three stormwater management ponds. The property is bounded by Odenhall Avenue to the south, Lost Knife Road to the east, Russell Avenue to the west, and Montgomery Village Avenue to the north. The applicant filed an SDP application on February 5th, 2024 requesting approval to redevelop the entire Lake Forest Mall property with 1,600 dwelling units, 750,000 square feet of employment uses, 250,000 square feet of large-format retail, and 220,000 square feet of commercial uses. Joint public hearing for SDP 9736-2024 was held June 17th, 2024. Comments and questions discussed by the Mayor and City Council and Planning Commission during the public hearing related to a multitude of topics, including but not limited to parking, signage, and streetscape, gap housing, diversity, and phasing. A joint work session was held on July 8th, 2024. The topics of that meeting was feasibility for the stacked retail with residential above, lack of on-street parking, phasing, potential interim uses, signage and streetscape, lack of sense of place, and civic space. Comments and questions discussed by the Mayor and City Council and Planning Commission during their work session related to revisions to the design guidelines, enhancements to the sense of place, refinements and changes to block's ENF, enhancement and activity of open space along Street 1, and options for block C. The Planning Commission held its record open until 5:00 PM August 23rd, 2024, and there is 190 exhibits in the Planning Commission's record. Also included in the record is the applicant's response letters, in response to the comments received during both the joint public hearing and joint work session, as well as revised plans. As noted in both the preliminary background report and staff analysis, the associated sketch plan contained four conditions. Upon review of the information provided by the applicant, staff is of the opinion the conditions have been satisfied. Of note, the applicant has received a letter of support from SHA for the signalized intersection at Montgomery Village Avenue, Street 1, and staff is of the opinion the applicant has satisfied enough of the conditions three and four to support approval of the SDP, but with a new condition of approval that requests the applicant to provide additional information as identified in the staff memo included as Exhibit 185. To quickly kind of go through some of the changes they've made to the SDP, in response to the comments received in the joint public hearing and the joint work session, the applicant has redesigned blocks D, E, F, G, and H. Alternative stacking concepts of block C have also been provided to address comments received. All other blocks remained unchanged from what was presented at the joint work or joint public hearing. So as I stated earlier, the applicant has provided an illustrative alternative massing option for block C to ensure flexibility and to address comments about the potential inefficiency of the block. The proposed plan allows for an alternative design, which redistributes the residential density by exposing some of the large-format retail facades and relocating the density to other locations, including additional stories. The maximum height of this optional scheme would be capped at seven stories in compliance with the approved sketch plan. The employment buildings on block D have been shifted to provide a new linear plaza between Street 1 and the building frontage. The linear plaza includes a double row of boulevard trees and provides a linkage and transition between blocks B and C to the north, and the residential blocks located south of Lake Forest Boulevard extended. The previously approved two-over-two stacked townhouses have been removed from blocks ENF. They were previously located here and here, if you can see my cursor, and they've been replaced with two new condo buildings. And in blocks G and H, the gap housing units removed from ENF have been relocated to blocks G and H, and the condo buildings in that scheme have been relocated. And again, that's in this location here and then down here as well. Overall, staff supports the changes to blocks D, E, F, G, and H, and are of the opinion the changes adequately addressed, the comments received during the joint public hearing and the joint work session. The applicant has revised the schematic development plan to incorporate a triplex unit to the overall gap type policies provided. In addition to the new triplex units, the project includes two-over-two and one-and-a-half over one-and-a-half stacked townhouses. Overall, the project includes 454 gap units, which makes up 28.4% of the total units within the project. Staff supports the inclusion of triplex units within the overall mix of gap housing, and is of the opinion the change better aligns with the intent of the Lake Forest master plan. The required off-street parking for the project will be provided through a combination of surface parking lots, structured parking, and residential garages and driveways. The parking facilities for the commercial and employment uses within blocks B, C, D, E, and F will be shared and dispersed throughout these blocks. The applicant has evaluated providing a minimum of .5 on-street parking spaces per unit within the same block. These on-street spaces are in addition to the required off-street parking per code. During this joint public hearing, the lack of on-street parking for blocks H, O, P, and N was discussed. In response, the applicant was able to revise the parking with the inclusion of additional on-street parking along Odenhall Avenue. Despite these revisions, block N still falls significantly short of the desired .5 on-street parking spaces per unit. Staff does support the planned revisions addressing the policy goal of providing .5 on-street parking spaces per unit within the same block. Most residential blocks achieve or come close to this target. However, staff still remains concerned about the insufficient on-street parking in block N. The applicant has updated the design guidelines to include expanded details on neighborhood character, strategies for the transit center, the replacement of typical residential elevations with precedentiary immetries, and general graphic updates to align with the SDP changes. The guidelines also now include a new section for skyline features and landmarks, and the applicant has made significant revisions to the signage guidelines. And overall, staff supports the proposed design guidelines, and is of the opinion most of the changes are good. With that said, we do believe additional guidelines should be included to bolster the transit center design. These enhancements should include methods for strengthening the relationship between the transit center and the surrounding buildings, strategies for landscape and hardscaping, and suggested compatible building materials. Lastly, staff continues to have concerns regarding the proposed signage guidelines within the design guidelines. Overall, staff is of the opinion the changes made are good, but again, staff does not support the new commercial sign located at the corner of Street 1 in Odenhall Avenue. This area is entirely residential, and that staff's belief the commercial signage should be excluded from this location. The applicant has incorporated interim uses for blocks D, E, and F. These interim uses will be implemented upon the completion of block C, aren't intended to remain until those blocks are fully developed. Staff appreciates and supports the inclusion of interim uses. However, it is important that these interim uses are not retained forever at the expense of the employment development. A strategy for the interim uses should be provided by the applicant a final site plan for blocks B and/or C. Additionally, the interim uses must receive approval of a temporary use permit renewed yearly by the Planning Commission. And in conclusion, staff has reviewed the revised application materials, plans, and supplemental information, and is of the opinion the applicant has adequately addressed the questions raised by both the Mayor and City Council and the Planning Commission. Staff is supportive of the schematic development plan. And lastly, staff is also supportive of both the tree removal variance and the associated environmental waiver, ENV 9737-2024. When we get to the staff recommendation of, or I guess I can read it now, we are recommending one minor change to one of the conditions that was in your packet, Condition 12. The intent of that was not to preclude any permits to be issued, more notably like a demo permit before receiving the JPA for MD. So I would just revise that condition to say an applicant to receive Maryland Department Environmental Category A Joint Permit Application approval for relocation of 84 storm drainpipe in the filling of Pond 3 prior to the issuance of a site development permit associated with either the 84-inch storm drainpipes or Pond 3. And with that, staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. And while you're at it, 12, it's filling, not filing, right? So you can pick that up, too. Thank you. All right. So let me wrap a little bit of structure around what we do with this discussion. First thing I want to clarify, Greg, with you is the development agreement piece of this agenda tonight as well. We need to separate that as a discussion item.
That is a separate discussion item. That will be the next item on your agenda.
Right, okay. So just to be kind of clear, we can't muddy the two. All right. Commissioners, any questions from the staff's report, anything you've seen in the record for tonight's discussion?
Greg, if we could just talk a little bit more about, I know county is the county, and we've got this aspirational, you know, transit center. What do we think the long-term sort of engagement plan is with the county to make sure that that transit center is as good as it can be from a planning standpoint?
So as you know, the city does not have zoning authority over the county as relates to reviews of site plans. We do have a recommendation or courtesy review as part of that process. The idea was, again, with the bolstering of the design guidelines, that would give the Planning Commission a little more, and the community, a little more understanding of what the vision is for that transit center in the future.
And somewhere in there, some kind of hopeful coordination between the two properties.
Correct.
Okay, and obviously with the city's full support and aid. Okay, yeah, makes sense.
Any other questions?
Greg, did you get any additional information regarding the financial feasibility and analysis of financial risk involved in the project? That came up a few times in the report, I believe. Can you elaborate on that a little?
So I do have Sharon with me, so she can maybe help elaborate on some of this stuff, but it is included in the report as an exhibit, Exhibit 185, I want to say, or 19, or, sorry, I'm losing my train of thought, 185. The main impetus of that condition was to address the outstanding items that staff still believes need to be resolved, or needs to be provided to resolve the condition in the sketch plan. We're okay with moving forward with the SDP in its current state, but do believe that additional information should be provided before we get to the final site plan for block C.
Okay, thank you.
I had a quick question about Condition 10. It says the existing transit center must remain operational throughout construction of the Lake Forest development in the configuration and location acceptable in Montgomery County. And was there a discussion with Montgomery County about that?
There has been, yes.
Okay.
Both the applicant and staff have been involved in different discussions with Montgomery County about how the existing transit center stays in operation in some form while the new one gets built and eventually opens up.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Greg, to that, follow-up to that point, does that, in effect, create some sort of critical phasing dependencies as far as when certain blocks can be built that, you know, the developer could be in a position where they can't proceed with construction in certain areas because the county is dragging their feet on a new transit center? Is that a potential outcome?
It potentially could be. Potentially, yes. I mean, in an ideal world, right, we're hoping it doesn't come to that. I don't necessarily foresee that being an issue. I think the county has told us multiple times the existing transit center is not suited to move forward in its current configuration. They do need the new transit center to facilitate this development and moving forward with future plans of their own. So I do see the county moving forward with that transit center.
That's fair, but just from a timing perspective, that's, since the developer's not providing the transit center, it's dependent on county funding and design process and approvals and awarding it to someone and getting it built. That needs to dovetail with the developer's plans for that, for the existing space.
And coming in the future, right, with the DRA discussion, it is one of the enhanced benefits that you'll see, whether the developer has agreed to sell the land at a reduction rate to the county to help facilitate that transit center moving forward.
Okay. Any other questions? I have a couple, and I'll preface it by saying, if you say it was in the packet dummy, I'll perfectly well understand that, but I'm going to ask anyway. The transit center design guidelines, if nothing else happened, what would govern the transit center in terms of a design guideline?
So there is a one pager included currently?
That's it, right. I mean, I saw that page, but it really doesn't say a whole lot.
It doesn't say a lot in staff's opinion.
Okay. There was a really nicely done, by the way, staff, what an incredible job you've done on analyzing this. Thank you all for doing that. Applicants team, remarkable progress. So thank you for all that you've done on this. I think we're in a great spot, but we're going to get into the weeds here a little bit, just so we're thorough. But I've got to say upfront, what incredible progress and nice work, everybody. Just take that in for a minute. All right, now, some of the stuff in the weeds. The very extensive response to the last round of comments, I got what you got, just sort of set out of it, which was there were sort of two or three specific things. There was a couple of sign issues outstanding, the block end parking. Was there anything else that was of that sort of long, long list of things that still concerns staff? Because those two things really kind of came to the top for me from reading through all of those.
No, I mean, most of the stuff that's in the staff report are things that can be really handled at a final site plan.
Final site plan, good, okay.
Yeah.
So on the signs question, and we've raised some of that during some earlier public hearings and work sessions, what would vest with this guideline relative to things like the concern about the south side entrance sign, you know, whether it's the right size, right graphics, whatever it might be? I mean, are we going to be able to review that in more detail as a formal sign submitted, or does this vest the actual design of those?
So the guidelines are laid out in a way where there's a phased kind of approach to the sign guidelines, where the applicant will come back with a more refined sign package at a later date, but all within the framework of these design guidelines still, which include maximum sizes and locations.
Okay. So I think, I think we could put that in the discussion then, okay. On the street sections that are in the design guidelines, what I was looking for and couldn't find initially, and it may be there, and again, I may have missed it, the street sections don't cover intersections, so the pedestrian-friendly ways that crosswalks could or should work at major intersections, the way that that whole environment would behave for pedestrians, is, did I miss that? Is that in there somewhere?
No, that's actually all really kind of wrapped into our road code requirements, because it takes the width of the roads and the right-of-way requirements, and the depth of a parking space, for example, on street parking spaces.
Well, that's the technical thing. What I'm saying is, in the road sections that are described in the design guideline, they get very, do very well to explain an environment that's linear. What I'm nervous about is that there wasn't anything that really explains how to, how they intersect. And that can be a very important piece, right, with how you get people across the street safely. So, and, you know, by the way, applicants team, we can ask you questions tonight, no problem speaking on that, but you just really can't provide any more for the record for us. So if anybody in councilor's team or whatever, Gary, if you have any answer to the intersection design guideline thing, please offer up whatever that is. We have a volunteer.
Thank you.
That's good, too.
Brian Fields, Engineering Services Division Chief in the Public Works Department. There are details of the intersection schematically in the plans throughout both the perimeter intersections, as well as the internal intersections showing where allway stops are proposed, where crosswalks, we have raised crosswalks. They are in there. If there's a concern about a particular intersection, we could discuss them now, but I think they are sufficiently detailed.
Okay, and those have been reviewed?
Yes.
Almost like a final design, an aye for final design.
Yes, they've been. We've thoroughly vetted them back and forth. Now, there's, obviously, we're schematic, so we've taken a look at them in final, but we feel pretty good where the intersection is.
And a serious focus on everything we can do to make it safer for people walking.
Absolutely. That's the primary focus. The road code supports that. I think you'll see that if we pull up any intersection. I think it'll be, this will be the most pedestrian-oriented development in Gaithersburg.
Yeah. It's funny, you know, it's road code, right? I want it to be walker code.
A network of shared-use paths, logical walking routes, wide sidewalks, safe crossings in anticipation of high pedestrian activity.
Perfect. Thanks for the reassurance. And let's see what else. Oh, and the block end parking. So if, if we get to a point where, I mean, you know, we're all very sensitive to the scenarios whereby parking is, there's a lot of pressure on parking for special events, you know, an individuals' party, whatever it might be. Are we now at a point with this SDP that there's really no other solution to take care of extra capacity even at final site plan? So?
There may be some solutions we can work on with the applicant at final site plan. The problem with block N, and I'll be honest, is the fact that they have a county road on one side of that block where they're not able to put on-street parking. So it is, they're kind of hemmed in on that scenario because of the county.
All right. Those are, those are my questions. So if there are no other questions, I think we're going to move to some kind of a discussion, frame this up. And I will do it this way, a little bit backwards. Is there any reason to talk about this in terms of not moving forward? I know we're going to have some conditions to work through and some concerns to address at final, but from an SDP recommendation to council to move this forward, any reservations?
No.
Sort of a strong man here, okay. All right. Now, on the conditions proposed by staff, any concerns with those?
No, the guideline should solve for me, what will end up being a problem, but we're going to have some kind of framework in order to go after a problem of the transit center and then the block next to it, and how they integrate, how they respect each other, how they become, sorry to lose my voice, but the, how they become a, you know, a real transit hub extended, you know, community center, so community access. So I think that's going to be the best we can do, and then put it on all of us to sort of promote and help. It's going to be quite a chore for the city to step in and get that done. From a planning standpoint, I don't see anything else we can add. I, after looking at it a little bit longer, I kind of agree with staff on the sign, that it is an invite. You know, when I first saw it, I'm like, okay, you know, we're kind of the dumbbell piece of old town, bringing commercial traffic into new development. Maybe it is warranted, but sometimes you've got to make folks walk around a bit to come up the actual commercial road, be a little more useful, and just the locals will know to cut through. But putting a sign there does seem a bit like you're inviting non-locals to use a residential road, right? And then on the parking, on this dead end, I took a pencil to it, just for what it's worth, and couldn't really come up with a way to not just butcher the plan and get a little more parking in there. So I think we're, I think it's been, you know, we painted ourselves into that corner, but the rest of the room is painted, so I think we leave it. My opinion.
And wait until it dries.
Yeah.
I want to emphasize also the idea of temporary use. I think that's, that's a great idea that, where the plots haven't been developed, and it may be years before some of these plots get developed, that there is a approval process for year by year for approving for temporary use, whether it be a soccer field, dog park, or something like that. So it's not just an empty field surrounded by a fence telling people to keep away. And I think it's something also a lot of the citizens would like to see, so they can have some additional use than just the green space that's being planned.
Anything else?
I just want to say that I was, I was struggling with 11, and I thank my colleague, Matt, for kind of giving it a little more context. I appreciate that because it kind of gave me a little more perspective. Thank you.
Okay, great.
Okay, one more thing, too. So the, I know there's some additional requirements from economic development. My fear is always that they're, you know, loosey-goosey, and you're just sort of throwing something else out that could end up being a roadblock. But in, you know, staff report seems to me very clear. You know, there's no performer that I've ever done that didn't have those, you know, items in it, and it can be reduced down, can be clarified. Assumptions, you know, can need to be made, but it seems like a very clear description of what we need, so would thank you for being clear. So, yeah.
Greg, any other? I'll close it to two points. I would like to add to Matt's comments about Condition 6 and the financial fiscal component. It would go, if you studied our record and our practice over the past number of years, we typically don't use economic liability as a criteria for our planning and zoning findings or discussion or decisions. But keep in mind, this is a recommendation to the mayor and council that includes the broader staff's input on what's happening. So to be clear, I don't know that we've, we've put enough discussion around Condition 6 to suggest that we authored it or that we necessarily would see it through. It would be more of us acknowledging that the staff who does that and doesn't necessarily work with us regularly has put that as part of this step in the process. Everything else on those conditions are very consistently within the purview of what we do, the planning and zoning issues that we take care of.
Yes.
And so if, you know, I have to acknowledge there were some late correspondence between the city attorney or assistant city attorney, the applicant's attorneys, about some of the points, and we can't consider that specifically because obviously our record is closed, and there's, there's really no opportunity to vet that in public. So just acknowledge that discussion's going on, and quite frankly, is still wide open for discussion with the council who has the, who has the approval authority on this. We're simply making recommendations that address the concerns that we'll have during the final site plan and through the rest of the development. And I think that, Condition 6 aside, all of the others are relevant to that, that attempt to get this set up for success as we move into final site plan. Greg, anything else we need to concern ourselves or address tonight?
Nope, nothing else for me tonight.
Okay. When does the mayor and council's record close?
It closes a week from today, September 11th, 5:00 PM.
Okay. So for those watching, or anyone else concerned with this application, if there's anything about this recommendation that you're concerned with, or want to amplify, want to disagree with, whatever it might be, or points we might have missed, please, please, please make it a point early in the week to get that to the mayor and council's record, and staff can then include that for their discussion, and it's welcome. So it's not uncommon for our discussion to elicit some more concern from the public or from the applicant's team, and that's just a natural part of the process. But we can't, and we don't want to prolong our step in this and then, you know, delay the next logical step in the approval of the SDP. So with that, I think, is there any other?
Greg said some thoughts. Sorry. Just real quick. So I'll echo your thanks. Big packet, great packet, really well done. Lot of information here, and really, a lot of it's very good. Just from the bones of this SDP, before we get to final, I think we've got more options now than we did, which is great, and we have some clear delineations, things like the new linear park, things like the new broken, you know, blocks, commercial blocks before we get to the entertainment blocks, some options on C, which is great. And I think we've got more pieces to make a better puzzle at final site plan now than we did, which is really great. So thank you for working with us and staff, predominantly not much us, and, and really giving us a better SDP that will lead to better placemaking, right? So there's, there's a lot of, you know, generic lines on the plan now. We're really eager to see placemaking up against that lake, to really make these things sing and bring in a lot more income to this property. We're excited about all of that. And just adding some of these little things, particularly on the design guidelines and some of the options in the linear park, I know it seems arbitrary at this level, but it may be additional detail than we see on a lot of our plans, much less other plans. But I think it's critical to making sure that we have all the tools necessary to really refine our placemaking at this next step, because it's going to be, you know, the next 10 years that we're going to be going, seeing final site plans. We want to be able to go back to a document that's smart and has some options in it. So, thank you.
I, I noticed it may sound really, really weird.
Oh.
Okay, and I can be weird. But there are a lot of, like, Canadian geese around Lake Forest, and they walk in the street. Oh, no, I'm, give me, let me?
You did it. You got weird.
Yeah, I got weird. Will we do some consideration to their safety? You know, I'm just asking. You know, because that's a concern.
I actually think the question is not as weird as, as, as...
not as weird as, 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 as it may come off. Safety is one thing, but I don't necessarily think it's a, an SDP or even a final site plan question, but the water's not going away, so management's an issue.
Limited waterfall. I can talk about geese.
I'm Nancy Shum. I'm the Environmental Services Division Chief for the city of Gaithersburg.
And say what you just said, but in the microphones.
So I do, back in Illinois, I had a Class A nuisance wildlife permit associated with geese and limited to waterfall, actually. But geese will come to the same spot every year. They produce, you know, nine to 12 eggs per clutch every year. But they can be discouraged without harming them.
Okay.
And so, I mean, that's what would happen. As soon as you start moving equipment in there, and as soon as they get to the demolition mall, they will relocate.
Okay.
So they won't, they're not that committed. You know, they are committed to the region, but they will just relocate themselves.
Yeah, Rio seems to have some success, but I'm sure you've been keeping an eye on it.
Yeah, a lot of times they use dogs to kind of discourage them, loud noises discourage them.
I mean, but, I mean, anyone who's driven down Montgomery Village Avenue has stopped.
Yeah, I mean, they, and they're migrating right now, so you're going to see a lot more movement right now. So, so geese, geese fans.
Maybe I'm crazy, thank you.
You are, but it's unrelated.
You know, listen, a more and more dimension to this plan emerges every year. I think that's fantastic.
Any other questions or concerns? All right, we have recommendation from staff to recommend approval.
Pardon me? I think you sure you had nothing else.
Okay. The recommendation from staff to make recommendation to mayor and council for approval of the SDP with, how many conditions?
Twelve.
With number 12, edits to number 12, which have been read into the record, I think, appropriately. So with that, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that the Planning Commission, based on the evidence and testimony submitted to the record and the findings in the final staff analysis, recommend approval of SDP 9736-2024 to the mayor and city council with 12 conditions.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Okay.
No.
Before we vote, Greg, any concerns? Okay. It's my move in a second. No, but, but I wanted to make sure that the motion was solid. All right, it's been moved in a second. At all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Good luck, thank you. Onto the next step. As fast as you can. All right, thank you very much. That takes us to a related component to this, this application, which is development rights and responsibility, excuse me, development rights and responsibility agreement for the Lake Forest Mall redevelopment, D R R A dash 9839-2024, and this again is a recommendation to mayor and city council.
So on to the next step, as you said, staff is before you to, tonight to present the development rights and responsibility agreement application, D R R A dash 9839-2024. Submitted by Kevin Rogers of Lake Forest Development LLC. This agreement comes before the Planning Commission pursuant to section 2A dash 6 of the city code. To provide you with a brief overview, the primary purpose of a D R A is provide for the creation of an agreement that can provide certainty and stability to developers while allowing the city to negotiate enhanced public benefits in return. A D R A aims to enhance development flexibility, innovation, and equality while ensuring the protection of public interest, health, safety, and welfare. The Planning Commission's responsibility is to evaluate whether the proposed agreement aligns with, one, the comprehensive plan, and, two, includes an enhanced public benefit. An enhanced public benefit is defined in the city code as a public infrastructure improvement or other public benefit provided by the developer that exceeds what is required by under applicable law. The current draft D R A includes nine articles, each addressing different aspects of the agreement. The applicant proposes four enhanced public benefits in the draft agreement, which include one, selling land within Block F to Montgomery County as a discounted rental or sales price for the relocated transit center, a financial contribution of $6,000, $6,562,500 to the city of Gaithersburg for any civic purpose, which includes but is not limited to recreational, education, social, or housing fund, or the capital improvements program, or both. An additional open space and afforestation exceeds the minimum required per code, and a public art contribution of $250,000. The Planning Commission's determination will, tonight will be forwarded to the mayor and city council, and the plant, and the, and the public hearing for the D R A is scheduled for September 26, 2024. And if you, I am available if you have any questions.
Okay, any questions?
No, go ahead. The, the only, the only question I just wanted to clarify as I, as I read through this has to do with the, the civic purposes that, as I, just to make sure I'm clear, and, and anyone who may be listening, I know the civic purpose on the site was a, a major point of discussion with the community during the master plan process. This does not remove the civic use requirement. It just removes, you know, that this payment is in lieu of, say, the developer providing that space at a reduced rate or anything like that. There, there still has to be space available for it. It just, on the business side, it's, it's a payment instead of, you know, subsidizing an operation of a space and trying to manage it.
Correct.
Which I think makes sense.
Yeah, correct. The SDP you just recommended approval for did include 30,000 square feet of civic uses in two blocks, E and F. So that still remains part of the SDP that the council will review on September 26. The D R A just removes the requirement that the applicant have to provide a 50% reduction of the rent to a civic use in the future.
Gotcha.
I think that, that's a good way of simplifying the management bits of it, but still, you know, providing the benefit that the, the public was looking for, so I think it makes sense.
Any other questions?
No questions.
Nope. All right. Staff recommendation?
Staff recommends you do the review of the D R A, find any conformance with the master plan, and that it includes an enhanced public benefit.
And I will say, one of the things I appreciate about it is the schedule, the staging and the phasing of the project itself in sort of a specific term. So there's a forecast for dates to have, have the project underway. Just helpful. Otherwise, I think maybe the way to just preface our recommendation is that it is consistent with the plan. It sort of reinforces the plan at policy level, which is certainly a mayor and council's concern. So, you know, it doesn't do anything to undermine that.
Right.
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 With the master plan or the
Right.
The council's ability to approve the public benefits, so.
Excellent. All right, is there a motion, please?
Chair, I move that the Planning Commission, that we review the draft D R R A for consistency with comprehensive plan and determine if the petition contains an enhanced public benefit, and that we will be forwarding it to the mayor and city council at a public hearing for, of the D R R A scheduled for September 26, 2024.
Second. Moved in second at all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. That takes us to our site plan agenda. There's going to be a mass exodus from this room right now, I think. Greg, by the way, while, while we're changing seats and all, the public hearing on the 26 is not joint, right? That's just the joint public hea, or, excuse me, the public hearing on the D R R A is not joint, correct?
No.
Okay. Thanks all for being here. If you have follow-up conversations, please take it out to the lobby. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Next up is our site plan agenda, and we have one tonight for U-9911-2024. Extension of temporary use permit for CarMax Auto Superstores at 16383 Shady Grove Road in the M X D mixed-use development zone. This is a temporary use permit. Sam, we're going over to you, is that right?
Correct. Good evening, everyone. Staff is before you to introduce temporary use application, U-9911-2024. As shown on the screen, yep, it's right there. The subject property is located at 16383 Shady Grove Road. The applicant is requesting an extension to temporary use permit, U-9627-2023, which approved temporary vehicle storage for CarMax at the subject property. This application, which is an extension to an approved temporary use, comes before the Planning Commission in accordance with section 24-12 dot 11, which allows the Planning Commission to approve by resolution an extension of the temporary use for a duration of no longer than one year. Here to present the application is Aaron Gerard, attorney with Lurch Early and Brewer.
Good evening. Let's see. So as was mentioned, we were here a year ago for the temporary use. You probably remember the story, but I'll flip through it again quickly. You can see the site, which was also up a minute ago, where it says 16383 is the vacant parking lot that for the last year has been used for vehicle storage. That's just a closer image of the same. You can see the main car dealership on the right and the parking lot on the left. This is a picture of the sketch plan that covers the property, as you can note, in the blue on the left, that's identifying the existing parking lot. Again, just the SDP plan for your reference. I won't belabor the point because I know you're familiar. So on the left-hand side in the red is the outline of the parking lot that is subject to the temporary use. On the bottom right is the existing bargate that is used. So this area is only used by CarMax employees for storage. There's no customers that are allowed over there. It's just kind of a staging area where vehicles are stored as they are sold or brought onto the property. This, these are details for the chain link fence and the temporary concrete barriers. Those have been in place for the last year. Nothing is proposed to change with those. And that brings us to the last. I did just want to note, we included in our submission, and I know in the staff report, going through the findings that must be made, they're slightly different than they were when we were here before you because of the new code. One thing that is worth noting is the new code actually changed the zoning, or changed what was permitted in the zone, so it's important that this be acted on tonight to keep that, what is now a non-conforming use going for the period of one year. The use won't affect, adversely affect the public health, safety, or welfare. As to our knowledge, there have been no complaints about the use of the, of the lot in the past year. Conformance with the master plan, which already acknowledged that it's a, it's a one-story building with a large surface parking lot. There's no permanent structures proposed. There's no disturbance, and there's no environmentally sensitive features that would be impacted. So with that, we respectfully request your approval of an extension of one year for the temporary use.
Sounds good. Thank you. Any questions? I will put you on the spot, sort of. Is there a longer-term plan for this?
Well, now that things have changed with the new zoning ordinance, we are probably going to be pursuing a rezoning to the C D zone because we don't want to remain, I don't know if you're aware, but they both, a, a surface parking lot and a car dealership are no longer permitted in the M X D zone, which is what we were annexed under. So we're going to be pursuing a, a rezoning, most likely to C D, which is an alternate zone that the master plan calls for. And hopefully through that process, we can validate this use so that we don't have to keep coming to you year after year.
And, and, you know, just kind of editorializing to make it a more permanent use, one way or the other, just so it doesn't live on as just a temporary sort of
Correct.
packed-together use, right?
Yes, and then we could make appropriate upgrades. I mean, we've kind of left it as it is, but we can make appropriate upgrades and add some plantings and, and make it a little nicer.
Yeah, all of that landscaping. Any questions? I guess I already asked that. Where are we? Public hearing, technically. I don't, my button doesn't take us over to Zoom right now, so can you tell me if anybody is?
Unfortunately, mine is also not working.
Okay.
I don't know if the TV crew can hear us.
The control room can tell us.
If anyone's on, but I am not.
Okay.
I'm getting a black screen, unfortunately.
Yeah, I am too. Can, can they? Can, yeah, can they just tell us if they know of anybody on the Zoom?
There are two people, but neither one of them have their hand raised.
Okay. Okay, well, let me ask. So if you're watching on Zoom and you're expecting or would like to comment on this application, hit the raise hand button on your Zoom screen, and we'll, we'll figure out a way to toggle over to you, and I'll wait for just a second to hear if anybody does that. All right, in the meantime. Okay, very good. So Sam, the recommendation, please.
Sure. So staff notes the recommendation, just slightly different than what's in the staff report. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony, and the staff report, findings and recommendation, approve U-9911-2024, and adopt the associated resolution, finding it in compliance with section 24-12 dot 11 of the city code.
Great. Any questions on the recommendation?
Nope.
All right, is there a motion, please? And you might want to just say as read into the record, because you changed the words.
As read into the record.
Well, no, you have to start with the.
I have to say the whole thing, you want? Make a motion that based on the exhibits submitted and the applicant's testimony and the staff report, findings, recommendation, move that the Planning Commission approve U-9911-2024, and adopt the associated resolution, finding it in compliance with section 24-12 point 11 of the city code.
Second. It's been moved in a second at all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, thanks for that. And, and go make it real. All right, thanks all. That takes us to, from the commission, Danny, may I start with you?
Yes, um, the city had a wonderful Labor Day parade.
I hear you led them inside.
They had an amazing grand marshal. It was incredible.
Fantastic. Did you get a hat and everything?
It was the best one ever. No, it was, it was quite an honor to be asked to be grand marshal. It was really nice.
Good for you.
It was a lot of fun.
Good day for it, too, right?
Yes, it was a beautiful day.
Yeah.
Yes. And as I always talk about the upcoming joint M D, M P C A and A P A Maryland conference in October, everything is, is going smoothly, and it's going to be great. I hope that my colleagues here get a chance to come in and be with us. October 20 to 22. It's going to be in, in Ellicott City.
Sweet, good spot.
At Turf Valley. Nice place, nice, nice.
You had me at certificate management for A I C P. I need the credits before they kick out.
All right, very good. Matt, anything tonight?
No, nothing from me.
Lloyd?
Nothing.
Carol, you can speak during this.
Nothing to report at this time.
Well said, well said.
All right. Greg, what do we got tonight?
I will just keep it brief. Just a reminder, your next meeting is Wednesday, September 18th, and that is all I have tonight.
Good polling? You've got everybody counted for?
Yep, everyone has gotten back to me on their availability, so thank you.
All right, great. Thank you. Frank, anything tonight?
I look forward to participating in the open meetings training at the upcoming conference. I think that's on Sunday, October 20th.
Yes. Perfect.
As, as one of the trainees. And this is what you're, what is this, your 10th year? You're always there with us. I don't think it's that long, but it's, it's, I'm getting to the point that I don't, you know, it's just been a lot of.
Yeah.
Excellent. All right. Thanks all from all corners of the staff and city hall for being here tonight. Any, anything to add? Guess not. Okay. With that, have a good evening, and we're adjourned.